This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Tenino Planning Commission. Let the record show that all commissioners are present with the exception of Dave Waterson, who hopefully will show up in a minute here. So let's take a look at this agenda. Not a lot on here. I'm going to be discussing the RV ordinance. Concept.
This is Erin. I move to approve the agendas presented.
Okay.
This is Alex. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Right. Moving on to the minutes of our public hearing on October fifth. Erin wasn't there, so. Someone else will have to make a motion.
This is Corey. I'll move to approve the October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two public hearing meeting minutes.
Did we get it? I don't know if this is important, but in the minutes, it says motion to approve as presented. There were some conditions that were sort of front-loaded by staff and some ecology comments and some other things that we mentioned. Does that need to be added? Or as long as they're added to the actual motion, I guess it doesn't matter, but.
Yeah, it's probably clear to adjust that.
Yeah, there is a staff report, and so I believe that's attached.
Ah, okay.
Did I need to make a new motion?
Oh, no, sorry.
I was gonna.
Did you second already?
I don't think yet.
What's that?
I don't think, I haven't heard of a second.
Yeah.
Am I able to second not being there?
You weren't there. Alex, you have to do it.
Mic's not working.
Okay, well, I guess we'll circle back around in a minute here. Oh, he's gone now. All right. Yeah, we'll just circle back around. Any public comment? Shane, you got anything?
No comments for this evening, though. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any staff reports? Any reports from the administration?
Yeah, we'll do a couple of quick things. Presented the preliminary plat to council last night with the conditions as recommended by the planning commission. Fairly straightforward there. So the the extra conditions, just as a reminder, were a recognition on the face of the plat that the property is next to the Miles Sand and Gravel, you know, mining operation, as well as language about frontage improvements. And so those were both added to the the staff report and reviewed by the city council and approved unanimously, you know, last night. So that that next stages for that, if you're wondering, is the applicant will start doing a bit of the site work, and they're having a survey out there next next week to have it fully surveyed in, and then they'll probably come back for final plat approval. And I think we have a placeholder, Jen, on the December thirteenth council calendar, something like that. So it should go pretty quick. And so that's the update on the preliminary plat. Couple of other things in play, building permits and things, a few more BLAs that are making their way through the process, but we can, I guess the last report would be at the, we should decide whether you're going to have a December meeting. I think what's on that agenda would be the housing needs analysis or assessment from the housing action plan. So we've got got some stuff to share on that in in December, if you want to meet, or or it could be in January, too, if you prefer. So that's that's all that's all I have from from kind of general community elements, updates.
Okay, sounds good. Alex, are you participating still? Oh, Dave's here now.
Sorry.
Hey, Dave. Did you go over to City Hall? Yes?
Okay, holy cow. That was quite, okay, I'm back. I don't know what happened.
All right, well, no worries. So Dave and Alex, if you want to look at the the minutes, we already approved tonight's agenda. We haven't had a chance, gotten a second on the minutes yet.
I was, I I was trying multiple times without success to second it, but I don't know why you guys couldn't hear me. So I second it.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on then. Let's see. Not having a public hearing, unfinished business. We've made it to the RV ordinance discussion.
I'm going to get my other, so I can look at the, I looked at it. Didn't have too many comments about the changes he proposed, but I just want to look at them again. There was one question. The one question I remember, maybe somebody can, you know, we did have the fifteen-day RV thing. Did he suggest we just change that to thirty days now? Is that what he suggested in this draft? Is anybody, I was reading through it and trying to, that was one of the things I wasn't so sure about. I mean, I'm okay with additives, just curious. It looked like he said on the bottom, just make it thirty days to make it easier on having to keep track or something. Let me, I'm trying to find, get to it.
Looks like he was up, started at one-twenty, went to sixty days, and been renewed, and then be renewed up to an additional sixty days as determined by the city without submission of other permit applications. It goes on, potential RVs with travel trailer on developed residential property of less than thirty days consecutive days within a hundred and twenty-day period.
That was the part that I was talking about that looked like it was supposed to replace what we have now on the books. Because there's kind of two different timelines in there. There's one for like a sixty-day period. Sorry, I'm trying to, having trouble getting to get into it on my other, my laptop, so I can read through it. And then I saw he removed the thing about parking on the side of the road. That was kind of related to the recent court decisions that you can't really move people parked on the side of the road unless you offer them other housing, I think, which is, I guess, something outside our control on that one. So I'm, if that's what he thinks should happen, I'm okay with that part of it. I don't know. Did anybody have any other comments or have any questions about what the draft there?
What will be the garbage and sanitation that we will propose as the city? Is that written somewhere? I mean, for the purposes of RVs?
I don't know, if it's separate, or is this what I think we already have, maybe, but again, yeah, I'm not sure if they were extending this.
Check here where it does talk about it, guys. Basically, garbage sanitation shall be disposed of in a manner approved by the city.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about. So we'll we'll tell them when they get the permit, I guess, what they need to do, or.
Well, I mean, I think we should set some guidelines up if we're going to allow this to go through. We should definitely have guidelines on and make it to where it's not getting to the point of junkiness. We want to keep the neighborhood still clean and.
I think it would just be what everything, what we do with everything else. I wouldn't think it'd be any different than any other house that was there, but we shouldn't allow them to have garbage piling up or anything else. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah. Probably we've had with some areas, there's problems that I'm having with people who are residing in campers for longer than the period allotted, is the, sometimes the houses either have garbage service or don't have garbage service. The ones that don't have the garbage service, the garbage tends to pile up in the back of pickup trucks along the side of the house, along the camper, and it's a constant going out there and constantly notifying them of the proper disposal of garbage, proper storage of the garbage and containers so that rodents can't get to them. That's the biggest thing with with these extended stays in these RVs. People tend to get really lax with the rules, and they end up sort of making themselves more at home than what I think sometimes they should. And we end up with these issues with the garbage being piled up around the camper and back of trucks. And then the raccoons and all the other rodents are having a field day.
What about sewage? You haven't seen any problems with that?
With the sewage part? There are containers that I'm noticing people are buying these little containers that are on wheels that they can dump like a hundred gallons into them, and then they can powder them off to wherever to go dump them somewhere else. But in one case, for instance, that I'm working on, and I've been working on for a while to get them abated out of there, you know, they had their gray water wide open, just dumping on the ground.
Right.
You know, they weren't hooked into this, into the cleanout, which is, which is what we don't want. And I know, speaking with Troy on that, on the facility maintenance end of things, that's a concern he has, is people hooking into these cleanouts, and now we're taking in more set, more sewage into the, into the plant. So that was a concern that he addressed to me.
Why would that be a concern? There's not any, there's not, we're not even close to any limit, and we're charging people for it.
Right. And then I get, from what I understand, is like a twenty-five-dollar fee that we're talking about assessing people to to, was that just for power?
That's for sewer.
That twenty-five dollars is for sewer to cover that thirty?
The power would be from the homeowner. I talked to Troy. He didn't seem to have any concern about it when I talked to him. But, yeah.
Shane, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to mention to to understand when you open up the avenue for allowance, you also have to be able to stand on the fact that there is a compliance factor that if they extend beyond or violate this, extremely hard to reverse. So because how then it's looked at in a larger political issue is you, there was once housing, now I'm not providing housing. Even though I signed up for this, that I would agree to everything, I've now now don't want to do that. And it's a, so I see, I'm for violation of this occupancy stipulation. So I would just say be prepared with how that's going to work.
That's virtually everything we do, though.
Right. No, yeah. It's a little bit different because, yeah, it's it's becoming the norm in many cities and jurisdictions, and they're finding that it's all good for about a month, and then it's chaos thereafter.
That's why we have the ability for them to cut it off.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
You know, another, another thing that I, issue that I see is some of the lots that we have don't have access to their back property, or they only have a five-foot setback on each side of the property, which doesn't allow them to be able to pull that camper to the side of their property and keep them within that offset on the property line that we want to have them keep. You know, but then where's the fairness in that to the people who like, well, I want to have, be able to have somebody do that on my property, but because my property doesn't meet the standards, I'm, I can't do it. But my neighbor can because his property is okay. I'm just looking at some of those issues arising.
Yeah, we we talked a little bit about these kinds of things a couple of meetings ago. One of the things that I was curious about is about, is, you know, like, people are staying in trailers now already, and it's not allowed in any capacity, right?
Exactly.
Fifteen days or whatever, yeah.
Fifteen days, decorative, and then fifteen days off, correct?
Yeah. And so we're kind of relying on on, you know, neighbor complaints. Is that my understanding is, is, you know, people are basically being allowed to do that unless neighbors are complaining about it?
Neighbors, community walkers.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody and anybody in the community, citizen action requests can come in from anywhere. And the majority of that, the complaints do come in through those citizen action requests when it comes to these RVs.
Well, right now, I mean, park on the side of the road.
Next message, what a picture to me for somebody complaining, saying, hey, Rainy, what about this one? And and then what happens is now, as they come in, you get one, and then you get two, then you get three, then you get four, then you get five, and then they just keep adding up, adding up, adding up. And now we're in a place where we're going through an abatement process to send these people letters saying, hey, listen, you're now in violation. But then, you know, five days later, they're still there. So it's the, it's the the power to say right then and there, you have to hook up and you have to leave within twenty-four hours. After twenty-four hours, I will be back. One way or the other, you have to be gone. But how do you enforce that?
Yeah.
How do you, how, say, well, okay, I'll move with my truck. It's, that's, that's the issues that I see coming out of it.
Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, this thing's been a nightmare. Okay, so here's a question. Again, I've had difficulty connecting here, but right now, do we have any sort of a fee that's charged for if Rainy has to go out with, like, to serve a warning or to? I mean, every time he goes out, is there a, is there a charge?
That was the plan on this, is for there be a fee schedule for him to do out, do the inspection, or if he had to do a reinspection, with the set of fees.
But, but I mean, as far as, as far as fees for, like, like a punitive fee, right? So if someone does let the trash build up on the side of their house, and Rainy has to go out, is there a set dollar amount for each visit that he comes out? I guess that's what I'm trying to ask.
Not that I'm aware of. The only thing that I get paid is the hourly wage to go out there and tell them to clean up the yard.
Right. But I mean, because, so what I'm saying is, is if, you know, if you want to enforce stuff, if we had a clear standard, I mean, you know, people don't like to lose money, right? People don't like to spend, and your time's not free. I mean, if you're just going out there asking people to comply, and I mean, even a court order is not enough, right? But the minute that either they start receiving a fee, or my thought would be, I don't think that you could charge the RV, I think you have to charge the property owner. So the property owner is the one who, on behalf of that RV, is allowing them to stay. They're ultimately responsible for everything, right?
Correct, correct.
So then if we start charging them a fee for not complying, right, that starts adding up. You know, I think that's the only way we're going to be able to get a better level of compliance.
Well, that should be for every residents in the city, then. That's just a fee that should be for any residents, or charging them to go to a house to do that. There should be.
It should be. It should. It just needs to be a blanket. Like, if 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 you are within a building code, or not a building code, if you're in, you know, a violation of a city ordinance, we need to have a set schedule, and there needs to be fees associated with that. And then that motivates people, and it also helps the city recompensate Rainy for all of his time, right? So the city's charging the fee. But you're right, it should be across the board if we're going to do something like that.
And I don't know, there may be.
You know, you, we can, we can charge a two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day fee for every day that the habitation or the, or the nuisance continues. But once you, once you issue that notice, there's a thirty-day, they have thirty days to appeal that. And then from that thirty days, if they say, okay, we're writing a letter and we're appealing it to the city clerk or to the city council, now we have to set them on the agenda. So that that could be another thirty days. So now they're there for sixty days. And then it could be another thirty days before.
So. You get a test. Okay, so even even though I think we can all agree that this should be blanket across the board, we're probably not going to be able to, right? So this would almost have to be something at the, you know, at the current that is tied to the RVs or the RV program. If you decide that you want to have someone, if you want to get a permit and have someone stay on your property in your RV, you are taking on these responsibilities and these liabilities and doing that. Part of that is a fee schedule if they're not complying or you're not complying.
Why would we do that any different than we would a household that has a garbage problem?
I would only say to that is, it's really hard to have the narrative in public view of, well, he's just coming out because the city wants to collect fees, and he's just looking at every piece of trash on my yard and and this and that. So it's really hard to navigate that. Whereas, like I believe it was Alex was mentioning, with this specialized program, this is attached to it, and you agree by agreeing to all of it.
I disagree with that. I think it should be the same for citywide. The whole point of this thing is trying to make it affordable. Somebody's family wants to come and stay there for a little bit, not, it's not, this is not intended to be long-term housing in the.
Right.
Yeah. If we're going to make all these thousands, hundreds of rules and cost them hundreds of dollars, it becomes not worth it again. Why would, you know, most likely this is going to be some parents that are living next to them for a summer or something like that, or and this is why it's a trial, so we can figure out some of these things and tweak the, tweak the ordinance that we see problems that come up that were unintended, or we didn't know about, or didn't know how to address.
And I think with anything, you only hear from those that don't comply.
Right.
Right. And there aren't a lot of them.
Well, can you all hear me again?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good. I'm not going to break my phone at this moment. So, yeah, but I mean, I just think, kind of going back, I mean, it would be great for it to be across the board for every property. But if our goal here is to try to create a successful RV long-term stay program, then I think that we should really look at that individually first, especially, Rainy, as you were saying, with the rest of the houses, it's like a whole, they have a thirty-day time period to, you know, to dispute or challenge. And we don't, I I don't think we want to, that's not going to build, that's not going to get us to a place of success. So again, my only thought is, if we want to make a successful program, there, there has to be something at stake for people to comply. Rainy's already seeing that, that he can go out there many, many times, and people just, you know, nod their head and say, oh, yeah, sure, we'll move. But, um, but yeah, but then maybe later on, if 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 we can work that, if this is successful, maybe we look at if it's a possibility to change city ordinance to have it go across all residential properties, or even commercial properties, all properties, right? But I don't know. But I'm just saying, I think we should just focus on doing what we need to do to try to make this a successful program. But I also agree with you that we can change it at any time.
Well, I'm guessing there's probably some kind of state law that you can't just, there must be something that was required for residents. If somebody's got a trailer parked in there, I would think that we would have to follow the same same kind of notice, allow them to appeal something.
Sure. But that's why, that's why I think the the way that we, the way that we have to go about it, if if we want to look at having, you know, standards and everything, enforceable standards is, again, going back to, this is a program that the city's adopting. These are the stipulations within the program. You, the sponsored homeowner, you know, or you, the RV sponsor, is agreeing to these. So it's, it's, it's part of the program.
I guess we can ask, I don't know if they would just say that you, you know, it's automatic fine, and there's no appeals or no waiting periods, or, so, I don't know. I understand what you're saying, but I just think that's what, that's what happens in every residence we have in this city since I've been here. We've dealt with these issues, and I understand a little bit that maybe a travel trailer can up that chance of that happening somewhat on a property if it's a travel trailer, if people don't. But my feeling is, if it's going to be a junk house, they're going to allow the trailer to have junk on it. If it's somebody that has a clean house, they're not going to want garbage piled up because they got to, are allowing somebody to stay in a trailer next to them.
Right. But and also a thing to consider, too, is the inconvenience to the neighbors. That have to deal with that travel trailer on the side of their property, and as soon as the guy walks out his door, they're right there on that property line, just looking right at you. That's, that's the complaints I've received from some of the citizens in in town, is that they're, the campers are so close to their property, they're up all night, they're making noise.
Did we talk about setbacks?
Say again?
Did we talk about setbacks?
Their setbacks are identified.
It says ten feet in the document here.
Yeah, ten, ten-foot setback off the property line?
Yeah, yeah, that's. Okay. I guess, I guess I'll just, you know, my thought is, is we want to give the opportunity to everyone, right? And for equality sake, that means we have to give the opportunity to the crappy house, just like we give it to the beautiful house, right? But if we have enforceable rules, at least the crappy house doesn't also have a crappy trailer. Does that make sense? It's like, the trailer is a different, it's, it's a different program, you know?
It is. And I think there is a ten-year limit on the, on the age of the camper that isn't, that is in this, in this.
The attorney crossed that out.
Yeah, he didn't.
I think that can be enforced.
Oh, that, the RV had to be less than ten years old?
Correct.
Crossed out.
Yeah, just as, there are a lot of parks and things like that, where that's a regulation, where even to stay in some state parks, the camper, unless proven otherwise, can't be older than ten years.
Right.
Yeah, there's some things on vintage provisions, but you have to, like, go through a process. But, yeah, a lot of parks won't accept, period. If it's fancy, not fancy, if it's over ten years, you cannot be part of that park.
And I wonder, is that because there's, do they assume that it's leaking or something, or?
There's, there's a lot of assumptions. I think it's just years of knowledge-based data that says usually things over ten years are pretty dilapidated, and the RV not made to last, you know?
Right.
It says right in the thing that they have to be in good working order and maintained in a condition that provides for safe and effective use.
Right. And then now you expose yourself to, well, who's making that judgment call, where the ten years kind of takes that judgment call out of there. Like, well, me, it's great, you know, it's like trash to treasure, you know?
I'm trying to look, there was something else in there that was.
So what's the, what's the normal building clearance for a property line on a single-family residential lot normally? Is it ten feet? Is that right?
Five feet on the side property of the, the side of the house property.
So like.
It isn't firewall six feet.
There'd be no way for me to fit an RV on my property without it being in the middle of the lot, basically.
Right. You know, it's one thing I look at is the safety behind that. If you're got that guy, he's got a camper right on the property line, and all of a sudden that thing catches fire.
Yeah, you got structure fires.
Right. So that's that part of this, the health and safety that I, I aspect that I'm kind of looking at as well. And then you got some of these, these that come out today, these things got tilt outs on all sides of them.
Yeah.
Well, those tilt outs are going to possibly protect over the property line.
If they had a tilt out, I don't have to be, that would have to be ten feet from the property line from the tilt out, I would think. If they had a tilt out, I don't have to be, that would have to be 10 feet from the property line from the tilt out, I would think.
Right. So it really narrows down the amount of lots that could actually take in.
You pretty much have a quarter acre lot at least just to be, you know.
Right.
Basically.
Right, and I mean, obviously the neighbors right there in the front of the yard.
Yeah.
You know, now, so.
Hey, we can just let them park on the road like everybody's doing because we can't, we can't force them off there.
So we could get them off the road because it's 72-hour stay of continuous.
What the law attorney just wrote here because of that Boise law that we can't force somebody out of a trailer if uh, we don't have someplace for them to go. He said, I don't think you should have this in here because of the Bose decision, right? We said it can't be parked on the right away.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I thought that that decision though had to do with uh, overnight shelter. So since Thurston County has an overnight shelter, then I think we are allowed. To tell, like, direct them to there and say, that's where you can go.
I don't know, that's the way it works exactly, but maybe, I don't know.
Cause I know in Lewis County, that's a problem we're dealing with, with right now is Lewis County does not have a homeless overnight shelter, therefore we, because of that law. We are not allowed to ask anyone to move along because we don't have a place for them to go. But here in Thurston County, since we have overnight shelters, I believe that Thurston County is okay.
If there's space for them.
So I guess wrapping up on the discussion, I mean, I, I'm all down for trying out the program. Um, I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make it as successful as possible, so we're not dealing with problems later. Anything we can do ahead of time to just give some guidance, I think will help in the long run. I think it's always. Harder to do corrective action if the corrective action wasn't explicitly stated in the beginning. Does that make sense? But.
Yeah.
I understand, but we can, yeah, we try to think of every single thing that's uh.
Totally, totally. I think we just need to focus on like the top, like, like what are our top three concerns, right? The way it looks, safety, um, and uh, you, or you know. Uh, added use on the sewer plant, right? Okay, so then we've got the setback 10 feet. If we had um, a, a fine system that the owner signs up for as the sponsor. That takes care of the trash and, and the concern there. Um. So I don't know, I, I don't think we need to go too crazy. We could think of everything, you're right. But it's just trying to just start out with a good foundation and then build and develop from there.
Mm-hmm.
So how do we, how do you envision that we'll switch from this system that we have now, which is pretty much. People are already living in their RVs to the new system where everybody will have to get a permit. Are we ready for that level of like. Enforcement action on initial push on that thing to be able to do it or?
And well, that's a good question, but I would say even to, even to even think about that, there has to be a mechanism to enforce it. Does that make sense?
Right.
Uh, and we've already heard Randy say, he goes out, talks to these people. Oh yeah, I'll be gone and they're there five days later. It's like, no one takes it seriously because they just avoid him.
Right.
So, so I mean, the truth is, is unless we're gonna create a system in place that can be leveraged. To gain a compliance. I mean, why is anyone gonna comply?
I don't.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, I don't see this as changing uh. You know, kind of what's happening now, really. Uh, except that, except that it would allow some people to be protected against uh, neighborhood or community complaints. I mean, people are still gonna pull in their trailers, they're still gonna park them and live in them the way they are now. Uh, outside of this program, but people within the program will be protected against complaints. That's. Really the only change I see that's happening.
Well, they'll be protected against a complaint of habitating an RV on private property, but they won't be protected against other nuisances that could occur while they're habitating. Whether it be, you know, whether it be garbage or noise or dogs or anything, you know, any other nuisance that can come into play still. But yeah, they could post their permit right on the camper so that people can't, won't call to say, hey, there's somebody camping. You know, we can, no, they've got a permit, so therefore it's a dead issue, leave them be. Uh, you know, then at that point, regulating that permit. You know, obviously we'd have to keep going out, you know, whether it's uh, every five days before the permit expires. To notify the homeowner, hey, in five days your permit expires. Um, at that point notify them of their options, saying, hey, you've got, you know, 24 hours to come in and. By getting another permit or, or you know, apply for an extension. Um, but approval could be, you know, they could, just because you apply doesn't mean you'll get approved, it could get denied. And now we're talking, now I'm thinking, I'm really thinking, well, we have to have some sort of tracking system. As I say, well, why did you deny me? Well, we've had this many complaints. And due to these many complaints, we're, the city doesn't feel justified in giving you another approval for another 30 or 60 days.
What are we doing with the people that have under the 15-day rule right now? What system do we have to track them?
I've got case files open on them, so I keep track of them through a, through a log that I have in the, in the, in the system.
Well, why wouldn't we do the same thing? What's so different about this?
We're just adding more admin time to it, which. Was one of the big concerns about the whole thing was admin time added in. Say again?
That's why we're adding a fee to it to cover the admin time.
And the $25 fee that's covers the sewer, well, that, you know, the extra water going into the sewer plant. Then how do we ensure, how would we ensure that they're properly disposing of their gray water and their, and their black water? How could we keep track of them not, you know, how, how would we know from day to day if they're hooked into the cleanup in the backyard?
How do I, how do we know that, that somebody's there for 15 days now? I mean, i- it's required and we see it if somebody uh, I don't know how, you can't, I guess uh. See everything uh.
Right. You know, if it's in the back of someone's property, if it's in back to someone's property or on the side of their property and they got a six-foot fence. There's no way of ever knowing unless you get called for a complaint.
Yeah, we wouldn't know if people are dumping sewage on their property from their house right now. I mean, you, at some point, you can't, you gotta trust people are gonna do the right thing when you give them what the regulations are and you check it when they start. And when you renew the permit, you check to make sure it's done. I mean, what, what would be the reason not to put it into the sewer? You're still gonna get charged a $25.
Right.
Good point.
Hey Randy, how much is the permit now? Do we, have we established a rate for the permit?
Established a fee, that's gotta be established by the city council, whatever they think is right.
I got a quick question, Randy. How many, just as a data point, how many are you contending currently? That this provision would allow a better resource for their situation?
As far as people habitating campers right now?
Uh, yeah.
That I know of, one solid that I've been working on for the last six months to get removed on the abatement there. Prior to that, I had over a dozen that I worked on.
Okay, okay.
Within the first year of being in, in the city and that was the biggest, one of the biggest pushes I was. Had to do was to do the, the, the right-of-way cleanup and the habitation campers on property over, and that was one of the. So for me, I'm like, man, I've been busting my butt to. Abate these situations and these nuisance that people have had throughout the years in the community. And then when I came on and I started enforcing these regulations and ordinances on people. We seen a, 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 a really huge decrease. In the amount of people habitating the campers and people all of a sudden were following with the ordinance states. On what we've already achieved to clean up, so.
That sounds promising.
Definitely some serious provisions that allow the enforcement end of it. And the fine portion of it, so that people take the program serious.
Yeah, and one thing, Dave, I totally agree with you, like, I think it needs to be really, the, the rules need to be spelled out at the time. Of filling out the application, so the homeowner knows what they're getting into. There needs to be a process to enforce those rules. Right? But then you're absolutely right, Dave, after that, it's, it's kind of community policing, right? I mean. If there's not a problem, we don't need to worry about it or focus. And if there becomes a problem, more than likely, one of the neighbors or someone walking is gonna bring it to our attention. Which is the exact same thing they're doing right now, right?
Right, and I don't, this is not intended to be some kind of, well, I mean, I personally would go. Push for letting people stay there as long as they wanted to, if I was, thought I could, could get it through. But this is for people that have, when they have their families over for a few months or have a, like I said, my son is building the house. I had a trailer sitting beside my house and they stayed in it for a while, longer than 14 days. And this isn't some kind of, uh, supposed to be some kind of thing for uh. For permanent housing for people. That's not what this is intended for, it's to, tended to allow somebody that. Maybe has a family member that has something happen and they need a place to stay for a couple of months, or they have a family visiting from out of town that may live in. Arizona during the summer or in winter and come up here for a couple of months. This is, it seems to me we're making way more out of it than this was ever intended to be.
Well, you know, I mean, a lot of times you have to make laws for the people who aren't gonna be, you know. Doing what they're supposed to be doing, unfortunately. So even though most people, maybe, maybe almost all people. Are gonna be trying to keep things clean and do the right thing and all that stuff. I mean, those aren't the people that we are even making this law for, really, right?
Right.
And, and the other thing is, is the city, if we want to limit it to try to only do 10 or five or whatever we want to say to start it out. So we're not feeling like we're overwhelmed with it. We can limit, also limit the number of, of, during this trial period, the number of, of, we allow. So we can kind of easily manage it and see how it's working.
So I guess what I, I really think, this will be the last thing I say, but it's just really important. That we make it more beneficial for someone to do the program. Than for someone to not do the program and just ignore Rainy. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's why I don't think we should do like a hundred dollars here and just make it so difficult. People don't even wanna. Tell anybody, they just go park it there and hope they don't get.
Clear, but, but we have to have an avenue where if they are doing it outside of the program. Then the consequences need to be more of a hassle and more than if they were to have followed the program.
Right, I totally agree with that.
Okay, that's all I got. I rest.
Okay, well, um, where do we take this thing from here? Uh, we would push this to the city council if we can. Um, come up with some kind of agreement.
Yeah.
Or there's the suggestions from the lawyers are there, so I don't know if we should just take those and make it.
Yeah, just clean it up.
So Jen, you could probably accept all those changes right now.
Yep.
And I think it's up to the city council to decide what kind of fees they want. If they want to have a fee for. Uh, every time they need to, they need to decide what's the correct amount. I don't, I, I don't know what's. You know, I don't have any way to judge what the cost is for that.
I don't think we have to do that.
No.
I have no idea what people's time is, is worth uh, to enforce this stuff, so.
How long is it even gonna take? I, I mean, I can't imagine taking more than an hour to come out and look at somebody's little travel trailer and making sure it's. You know, it's the requirements.
Well, a couple of things I added that uh, if you want to add them into there, a couple of thoughts that I came up with. As far as hookups go and proper, you know, adequate power supply. I think a 30 amp service. Would be an adequate power supply for these RVs. Um, and a backflow, a backflow preventer to hook on the water source that's going to the camper. Would be two things that.
I might have missed when we, uh, the last time we talked about this, uh, how will they hook up to the, the existing grinder pump? There's like a way to do that or no?
Well, I think it wouldn't be available for everybody. I have a cleanout that's right next to my house that they could hook up, you know, we could put it in very easily. And, but some people may not have that, that's what they were talking about, the portable tank. There's a trailer parked right next to my house, almost.
Right.
Now that's been there forever and they have a portable tank that was on wheels, they, I guess they, I don't know where they take it when it gets full, but.
So those people wouldn't have to pay the 25 bucks a month, right? If you don't have a.
That would only be if you're hooked up to the sewer system.
Okay.
And there is language in there, it says through the permitting, permitting process, methods of wastewater disposal shall be established. So they have to have that established, how they're gonna do that uh, in the permitting process.
Nice. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Randy?
No, I'm good, guys, that's it. Just those two items is what I see. Uh, is the backflow preventer. When they hook up to the water, the hose, wherever they hook those up, just put a backflow preventer on it. And then um, a 30 amp service, I think was something that should be required. I know you could do a 20 amp service and then they have a reducer they can add on to the. Onto the RV plug to make it a 110 versus a 220 system going in. So I mean.
As in the language right now, they have to have access to adequate power and water at the site, so we can be, I mean, adequate power, I guess, I don't know who, you know? I know some trailers hook up to 110, I've seen them, but uh, I guess it's what you're gonna use, you know, or when you're there, you may not need as much power when you're. In the summers, you may during the winter or if you're using a heater, I don't know, I don't know enough about them to know that, but it does say they have to have adequate power. And water at the site.
Yeah, what if you have solar panels or something on top of your RV?
Right.
Solar panels work?
So, I, I think, I think that's enough. I mean, I wouldn't mind saying, I mean, if a backflow preventer is needed, I don't know about that. We could add back with a back, with a backflow preventer on the water where it talks about the water.
Right.
If that's something that's required, I don't remember ever hooking up back, backflow preventer when I've been camping in a camper, but. It may be a different situation than this.
So do we, so we envision that there will be an initial like well visit for the RV after they get the permit? And you, and that'll be when you can say, you know, where's your back, backflow preventer, you know, do you have adequate power? How are you powering this thing? And then when they say, I'm, I'm gonna run my generator for 24 hours a day.
Right. I don't know, this 10, this, this 16-gauge 100-foot cord. Um, to the outside outlet and uh, and run like, you know, run my power through that. Obviously, we know that, that's just a, not, not something we want to see, um. That, that cord would heat up and melt, like there's no tomorrow, so.
There is language about generators too, no generators.
Sure, no, I was just, I was just kidding about that. But I was just mainly talking about the, the need for like an initial visit to make sure everything's good before they start or something.
I think that's what we envisioned, they'd be told everything they have to do when they get the permit.
Yeah, and like anything, call for an inspection once you're, once you got it at the location, call for inspection. And we make sure we got it in the proper location, proper setbacks, proper power, proper water. Backflow preventer hooked up, great, you know, have a good day, enjoy your camp stay.
We can keep the language a little vague in terms of like the power requirements and backflow and stuff because you'll be catching it at that moment, I guess, right? We'll just have, it has to be approved by the city. And that's probably enough for our purposes, right?
Yeah.
For our, our little bit here. All right. Well, what do you guys think?
So I, I'm totally, uh, I mean, I, I'm comfortable with sending it to the city council and. And seeing what they think about it and.
Yeah.
Giving them the opportunity.
And I think, like I said, I think we want to say, or they want to say that we only want to do this for five units for. A, a period of time to see how it works, because we don't want to be overwhelmed with 40 people. I don't think that's gonna happen personally, but. Uh, I think that'd be per- perfectly reasonable for this trial, especially for the trial period, just to see. Working out kinks and making sure that uh, you know. If there's things that come up that are, we need to deal with, we were able to deal with them without having, you know, 15 people instead of five. So I think that's uh, something that if I went to the council meeting, I would say, hey, I think you should, you know. I think we should limit the number of units initially to, just so we don't get overwhelmed with something that we didn't realize we would. Would be happening.
I agree, and I think the ultimate goal, right, is to create a program that's just so streamlined. With as few barriers of entry and it's so successful that eventually it could be opened up because you know that it self-regulates and. People who do it understand it and they're taking ownership. I mean, so, but I think starting out small and then slowly building it as, as. It works, it's a great, great approach.
That's, that was kind of my thought when we, when I talked about doing the trial.
So at this time, are we looking for a motion to?
Yeah, I think so.
Carry this on to the council?
I would.
Make a motion too. Go ahead.
Hold on a second, Dave. What I would propose is that um.
Hold on a second, Dave. What I would propose is that um, maybe we can. Get a second here to uh put a clean version of this up on the screen so that you can all read it again. And then uh have a motion in the second to recommend. Uh, approval in ordinance form to the city council, then discussion and then um then a vote.
Um, I'm having a little technical difficulty on letting it um. It like kicked me off and now I'm back in, but I don't think I'm like the admin right now, so it's not letting me change anything on the screen at the moment. I'm so sorry.
I might, I I might be able to do that if if I do the screen share from here.
Okay, I don't know if it'll let me make you presenter. I tried to make myself and it, it's being weird. I don't know what's going on.
So all, just as a reminder, all of these changes you were good with, there were no edits or revisions to the city attorney's right. Suggestions.
What I read through, I was comfortable with him. He reduced the temporary time but a bit in half basically, but I'm okay.
Another sixty days.
So I'm just saying, if, you know, if it does, that's it works, then it, you know, for when we go through the trial and we can. Except make adjustments if we need to, but uh, I'm good with doing the sixty with a additional sixty.
So uh, this is probably a stupid question, but they will, the council will know that it's implied that they'll. There'll be like a fee for this and all that kind of stuff, right? I mean.
I was gonna, I was gonna actually go to the meeting if they're gonna look, when they're gonna look at it. Or, you know, if you guys want me to, I mean, they're ready.
Sure.
But uh, yeah.
Jen, are you getting those requests for a screen share? Okay.
No, it's not, it's not recognizing that I'm the organizer now. It has me like logged in as just a spectator and now it's not letting me.
You're actually logged in two times, you know that? You have two uh entities logged in.
Yeah, it tells me that. I know, I don't know what's going on.
You should bail and come back.
Okay, I'll try to do that.
Like kill everything?
It kills everybody. Be right back.
It said the organizers left and the meeting's gonna end in sixty minutes if she doesn't come back. One hour. Got an hour to come back.
I got all night long.
She looks lost.
She's frozen.
Can you all still hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good. I don't think it's gonna work because the other entity that she has logged in is the. Um, meeting leader and uh, if you click on those three little dots, it says that it's recording, so it's. All recording and going through that, you know. JS.
That's a problem. Just bring it back to the next meeting. I don't think at this point, it's mostly in the summertime where people are gonna be like having families over.
That's a good point.
What's another month?
Sorry, guys. Do you, um, I'm so sorry. I can send it out to everyone fixed tomorrow, but. Um, yeah, we can throw it on next time.
Or or if you'd like, I could read it, I could read it um, kind of into the record here with those edits.
Either way, it doesn't matter to me. You could email me the document and I could accept it.
Yeah, or Dan, if you don't mind narrating, um, I I know it'd be nice to, you know, get this moving forward.
I could use different voices for different sections. Apparently that's.
If you would.
Now I'm excited. Now I'm really excited.
We should all take a paragraph.
Yeah. And it pretty much mirror what you've got on the screen. Temporary occupant, so there's a front-end piece that has a whereas is uh and the ordinance. That that's what the attorney put together that I don't, I'm not gonna read that portion in. Cause the council will use that, but the the intent is to read the basis of the language in here and uh. Allow to have discussion and then you guys can make it, make a decision. Uh, so starting temporary occupancy of residential vehicle or travel trailer is the title of the ordinance. Recreational vehicle RV or travel trailer located on a residential lot of record may be temporarily. Temporarily occupied for a time period of a hundred and twenty days. Subject to compliance with the standards set forth in this section, recreational vehicles, travel trailers or tents located within a recreational vehicle park. Or other public areas are subject to other standards set forth in the Ten Thousand Municipal Code. Whereas established by city staff consistent with the Ten Thousand Municipal Code. Number one, temporary occupancy of a recreational vehicle or travel trailers permitted in all appropriate zones when in compliance with the following. A, within the city limits, only a recreational vehicle or travel trailer located on a lot developed with a principal dwelling unit or dwelling. Under construction or remodel may be occupied for the temporary time up to sixty days. And may be reviewed renewed, excuse me, and may be renewed up to an additional eighty, sixty days as. Determined by the city without submission of an. Other permit application. Occupancy of RVs or travel trailers on developed residential property of less than thirty consecutive days. Within a one-hundred-and-twenty day period do not need city approval. In that same section, recreational vehicles or travel trailers shall be in good working order and maintained in such a condition as to provide for safe and effective use. That's letter B. Uh, letter C, recreational vehicles or travel trailers shall not be placed in critical areas or their associated buffers. D, recreational vehicles or travel trailers shall have access to adequate power and water at the site. In addition, through the permitting process, method of wastewater disposal shall be established. If connection to the city sewer system is established through an approved connection, the property owner will be charged twenty-five dollars per month. And the utility customer's utility bill, no gray or black water shall be discharged on the property. Any evidence of such will cause immediate revocation of the temporary occupancy permit. Utility customer will be responsible for any unpaid charges as a result of occupancy of an RV or trailer on the corresponding residential property. Subset A, city staff will prepare an application for temporary occupancy consistent with this ordinance. All applications for temporary occupancy of recreational vehicle or travel trailer permits within the city limits shall include a statement of the type of recreational vehicle. How water and sewer services will be provided. On to E, no generators are allowed to power their recreational vehicle or travel trailer under this permit. Letter F, garbage and sanitation shall be disposed of in a manner approved by the city. Letter D, recreational vehicles or travel trailers shall only be placed inside yards or backyards of the lot. Instead of the front of a residence where a house exists on the neighboring property minimum of ten-foot plan shall be maintained from the property line. Establishment of a use to not impact neighboring properties, all city standards related to single-family dwellings shall apply unless specifically changed here. A maximum of one RV or trailer is allowed per lot. Section H, at the discretion of the city, temporary occupancy of a RV or travel trailer shall include a site plan or map showing proposed placement. The typo there of the RV or travel trailer on the property. Letter I, the recreational vehicle or travel trailer shall be removed from the lot within fourteen days after expiration of that temporary occupancy period. Except the recreational vehicle or travel trailer may remain on site unoccupied. If the person or entity in control of the property is the legal or registered owner, subject to any city requirements for storage of recreational vehicles. Or travel trailers. Uh, maybe roll down a little bit on that screen there, Jen. Um, number. Two of this uh proposal is. The occupancy of RVs and travel trailers on residential properties is not intended to modify the. The or amend any other section of the Ten Thousand Municipal Code pertaining to the use, parking, storage, abandonment of RVs and travel trailers. Or any other section generally. Uh, number three, which looks like, actually, um. Yeah, number three, city staff will have discretion to limit the number of permits for occupancy issued as described herein based on the city's financial and staffing capacity. And finally, number four, violation of a temporary occup- occupancy permit shall be punishable as a class-one civil infraction pursuant to RCW seven-eight. Zero-one-twenty. In addition to other civil penalties that may be applicable to such violation. Such as for vehicle abandonment. That is the end of the proposal.
I'll make a motion to approve as read into the record.
Alex Murray, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Were there any opposed, Will?
I don't, any opposed? I think everyone said aye.
It's hard to tell.
It is hard to tell. I have one last question. I'm sorry, this is annoying, but. The occupancy of number A or letter A, occupancy of RV or travel trailers on developed residential property of less than thirty consecutive days. Does not require city approval, but then after the end of your permit, you have fourteen days to leave. Why wouldn't you have thirty days to leave or? Without city approval?
I think as it's two different processes, the thirty day was meant to be just somebody is casually coming here. Uh, you know, like it is now. I, like I said, that's the part that I was talking about that is now fifteen days. They changed it to thirty days, so I don't know, uh, you know, I I'm I'm cool with thirty days, but. I think there's, this is really too different. It's just differentiate between uh, does somebody come in here and stay in for a bit of time versus this.
Oh, yeah, no, I get it. It just sounds, it doesn't matter. I'm fine with it. I don't wanna, I I I like it, you know, it's cool. It's just a long time, kind of, but it doesn't matter.
So just one question real quick, um, and then I guess this maybe is more for Dan. Do we need to have anything in there that this program could be canceled at any time? By the city council or are they able to do that? Without that verbiage?
Yeah, they can, they can cancel and repeal any ordinance they want to.
Perfect.
The top of my head what their protocols are for a public hearing or something like that, but um, yeah, they can, they can. Take any of that stuff out without having a sense of provision in the, in the ordinance.
Perfect.
Okay, we did it.
I think, I think Dave had said something about a pilot program. I don't know if you wanted to request that the, that this, this the city. Evaluated for a certain period of time and then have a report.
Yeah, I think that'd be, I thought I had it in the original one that I handed, so I don't know if uh. It just got missed. I thought I had it something for like a six-month pilot project or something, but. I think it's something that, I don't know for sure, but I would think the city council could just uh state that in there, yeah.
Maybe you could mention it when you go to the meeting or something, I mean.
Definitely, we'll mention that in the uh, yeah.
The permit fee.
Permit fee.
Yep.
And uh, yeah.
So now, do we need to now do a motion to to present this to the city council or?
That's what we just did.
I think we just did.
Okay, okay. I know we did it to the record. Okay, cool. Perfect, awesome.
I don't, I don't think and and I, I should check, but I don't think that there's, um, because this isn't, um. Comp plan related or or. Typically, the council is the one who adopts new ordinances, you know, uh, so this is more of a recommendation to them with a recommended set of languages. And so the council will presume, I think they do have to have public hearings on on code additions.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Hey, I appreciate all your guys uh hanging in there. I know this is taking a long time and uh. I will do my best to uh make sure it's successful since I'm the one that started up.
I think it's worthwhile, it's definitely worthwhile to talk about and get something going. I mean. So, yeah.
And anytime we can make our city diverse and and, I mean, and and you know, like I said, I, from the beginning, I love the idea of grandma and grandpa. Coming up from California for, you know, a couple of months in the summer. Boom, they can park right there with their, with their grandkids, you know, or. Just things like that. I think it's great.
Okay. Uh, so I don't think we have any new business. I guess we're done with the RV ordinance. Um, there's a question about whether we want to meet in December. I guess. Do you not want to meet for some reason, Dan?
Uh, no, I just wanted to get clarity on that just for calendar purposes.
Sure. I don't, I don't know.
I think what we typically did on the city council was that we had business and it needed to be taken care of. We had a meeting if there was really nothing on the agenda that needed. Attention, we kind of just skipped it, but so that could be a possibility too.
Let's say we're gonna have a meeting and just revisit it like, you know, the week before, like we usually do.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Any other announcements or anything related to the meeting? No? All right, uh, meeting is here and then.
Can I say something real quick? I was gonna, I thought about it. I did hear from, I don't know if all of you are familiar. It's been a few years now. We've got a grant with PSE to do a fairly large solar installation with battery backup over by the uh. Power substation, kind of by the high school. I did, they're, they're gonna start moving forward with that pretty soon, so we may see some.
Awesome.
Activity on that over there. Like a three-million-dollar project, so it's a big, it's a big deal for our area.
Cool.
And so all, all the panels would be over by the substation, um.
That would be lot areas where they're in a, in a pretty good sized battery backup system and then. They're trying to even get funding. I, they did get funding to put a generator that's powered by like clean uh, clean uh. Not, we're not nitrogen. What are they talking about fueling cars with? The uh hydrogen.
Fuel cell, yeah.
Yeah, like a fuel cells, because the battery's not big enough to make a, you know, serve a long time, so there's a longer outage of that generator would kick in.
And so uh, what are, can you, can you list some of the the benefits of us having that program? Uh, or that project installed other than the obvious green power thing, but it sounds like we get some benefits.
Yeah, well, how it all kind of got started was uh, we were talking about our community not really having any place if there's a disaster, earthquake, you know, major event. There's really no facilities in our town since we're all electric. We don't have a lot of options to uh. Uh, house people or have any kind of community response if there's a disaster. So what they're gonna do is run a line. We have solar on the high school too, so they're gonna connect the solar at the high school with the solar uh at the site. And then there's gonna be backup power sent to the high school that'll, that'll allow the school to uh. Be a space for people and, you know, do some cooking and a warm space for people and hopefully like showers or some of that kind of thing. If there's a major event that we need that kind of uh.
A disaster. Yeah.
Yeah, disaster. So that, that was really the, that was the driver, biggest driver behind it.
Yeah, that's great. Very cool.
Anyway.
So are you gonna start working on like our community solar grid out by the water treatment plant now or something?
Yes, I want to. With all the money coming out now, I would love to get a, where people that can't have solar on their roof for some reason or don't have a space at their house. Have like a community solar project that people could uh, could buy if they, if they want to, so.
Yeah, I'm always tempted to get the panels, but I feel like it would be nice if, if somebody else maintained my panels for me.
Yeah, so anyway, yeah. Yeah. So anyway, yeah, I keep my eye out for grants and stuff, uh, but there's supposed to be a lot of stuff coming up about renewable energy here coming up with, uh, soon. So next year, see what happens.
All right. Well, that's good news. Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, unless there's any other announcements, I'm gonna say meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Take care. See you next month.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.